Please move away.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
... as to compliance with the open public manhood act, chapter 231, P. Al, 1975. Out of the notice of this meeting that has been provided in the following manner, the annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park trap, the Coaster and Star Ledger on December 18th, 2013, and posted on the board the same day. All notices on file with the city clerk. ... please move. Help the setting of the three minutes. Nine is on Conroy.
Move it.
Second. Officer Morado?
Yes.
Officer Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell? Yes. We will now go into public participation. Please come to the mic. At the back of the room, state your name and address. There is a three-minute limitation.
Good evening, Pam Lambert, St. Avenue. My favorite list tonight, I'm really happy to say, at the last meeting, I didn't add any new items to it because the interaction between the council, the city manager, and the public was just what you always wanted it to be. People had asked a question, the council answered a question, and it was answered on the spot. So, I really feel like, personally, my black hole up there is really being addressed, and I appreciate all the hard work, especially the city employees. And Mr. Kelly has asked Tony Nuttio to follow up on issues with me, and Tony was great about getting back to me. I was going to ask about 15 issues tonight, but I did get an email from Mr. Kelly. I really haven't had a chance to look at it. I don't think the councils had a chance to look at it either. So, I will just mention one of them, that being the reentry program for residents. There is a resident of the city of Asbury Park, Arnold Paul Hager, who is here. Arnold, right there. And he is willing to head this program up in the city, for the city, on the city's behalf. So, he walks it off right now. So, I suggest that you keep an eye on what he's going to be presenting to you about the reentry program. Maybe we can pull the flagman program into that also, and get those issues taken care of. In my last email to the council, I mentioned the charter study commission, and how we are all still residents of the city and still are willing to meet with the council. If you want to meet with us, we can discuss our findings with you. And the last thing I wanted to point out was, what this list represents is the nitty-gritty of running the city, but we still want to hear from the council what your vision for the city of Asbury Park is. Where do you see Asbury Park in one year, in five years, in 10 years? What is the vision for the city? The big vision, besides this nitty-gritty? Thank you very much, and I'll be back for the next meeting with this list. Thank you.
Pat, this is Senator Murray Daphne Asbury Park. On Thursday, the 19th, at 6:00 p.m., there's going to be a senior awards reception in the Asbury Park Festival Media Center. The Asbury Park Homeowners Association is going to be proud to give two scholarships. And I am personally going to give a scholarship to this young lady that I'd like to acknowledge, Talisha Allen, from our school system, who has achieved a 15-10 on her SAT, and is accepted to Ohio University. Talisha can't be here tonight, so I'm going to read something from a letter that she gave the homeowners. I suggest that the Asbury Park High School has preparation classes to the curriculum. There should be an HSBA, SAT, and ACT prep classes. Asbury Park students are known for having low test scores, so the school should offer services to assist them in getting higher scores. If ABHS had kept the SAT prep class they offered at the beginning of my junior year, I would have done better than my 15-10. You better hope. Officially, I would just like to add on to Mayor Campbell's comments earlier, that new planning board positions that will be opening up, perhaps in June. She mentioned three positions that are coming up. And to just bring to your attention that there is mandatory training for New Jersey Planning Board members, and they must take these classes. A lot of, what I read in the newspaper, it seems to me that the planning board would like to design buildings for the developers. However, it is not their responsibility or obligation to do those designs. It is whether or not, it is legal within the plan. And I will be there Monday night to support I-STAR Financial. Thank you.
Pat, can you repeat that tape that was reported?
Thursday, the 19th, at 6:00 p.m., is the oral ceremony.
In addition, the city is also going to use a way of paying for Talisha for a huge, huge accomplishment that she's...
Absolutely. Positive.
Arnold Follinger, Asbury Park. Just have one question. Mr. Kelly, were you able to determine the tax-exempt rateables for the town that I asked at the last meeting?
Arnold, I could provide you that. I don't have that. I could simply email you all the data that's collected.
Okay.
I just don't have it committed to memory. We have all of the exempt properties, and they're all categorized within that classification.
Yeah, I tried to do it, but can't do it online. Okay, thank you.
I'll take that. Are we done?
Oh, yeah.
Hi, Rita Moreno, St. Avenue. Did I hear the city manager say that they don't do a background study, a background check on employees that are being hired? Is that correct?
I understand that the city has not done any background checks on non-uniformed employees.
Well, I mean, that's pretty, that's a startling statement, because they do a background check everywhere you go, no matter how small the job is or how big it is. I mean, like, I don't understand why we don't do that. Is that why we're having a lot of problems? You know that?
I don't know the problems that we're currently having.
Well, there's a lot of problems floating around the city this week about our employees. I think you know what I'm talking about.
What?
But I think you should look into that, and I think background checks are very important to all us taxpayers here. This is only one little mile here. And I think you should really take that under consideration. And I was talking to the payroll girl. She said you do do a background check. Now, there's conflicting interests here. Nobody knows what anybody else is doing. Do you know if that's a fact? That they don't do background checks?
I don't, Ms. Moreno. I understand that different type of background checks, criminal checks, financial background checks, I'm not sure that very extensive, including both criminal and financial background checks, are done for non-uniformed employees. Very extensive background checks, including criminal and financial, are done for all uniformed employees. Does that sound clear?
And I understand they did that on you?
They did.
Uh-huh. The other thing I wanted to talk about, the press had an editorial about the pilot programs, but they really missed a lot of facts in that editorial. And you should be clear, they should be clear about what they say about the $50 million bond, that will probably wind up being $60 million. And that, you are right, you said they are going to collect 100% taxes, but we are not going to get 100%. We're only going to get 57, or whatever that number is. 38% is going to go to paying for the infrastructure. Is there another town in Monmouth or the whole state of New Jersey that's doing that? Could you find out? Because I'm really interested in that. If there's another town that's paying for the infrastructure of the developer. You know of any? Do you know of any? Could you find out? I really want to know that answer, because I think we're the only one in the whole state that's paying for the infrastructure, and I don't think that's fair. And the other thing I wanted to say to the planning board, you know, they put up pictures, and they look gorgeous when they're going to build these buildings. They should have models, because that's the way it used to be, so you can see how that building's going to look and where it's at.
Excuse me. Time was notified, you need three minutes or around?
Oh, okay.
Cory Ross, Westside Community Center. I'm here to follow up on Ms. Rita. Now, I've been made aware, as a volunteer for a community center, that is a pedophile amongst us who are employed at the city of Asbury Park. My question is, if I know it, Mr. Kelly, it's unfortunate that you don't know it, or you're saying you don't know it. So, it goes back to stop line. The other issue is, not just the criminal background, when somebody checks an application and says, "No, they have no criminal background, but they went to jail, and they were a pedophile." That's a concern. But it's not just that, but it's also having people hired in positions where they have the qualifications. We know that there's a number of people, including your community development director, that doesn't have the qualification for the job. I know for a fact that the city of Asbury Park is still under the Civil Service Commission. So, we don't know what's going on. But I'm glad you have your director here as a follow-up for at least three months. When can the public get a copy of the draft 2014 Community Development Black Grant Annual Action Plan? Also, when will the public hearing be held? You have previously stated this plan was approved, and HUD said it was okay, and we know in fact that's not the case, but you finally admitted that that's not the case. So, again, you had also stated that you would put that on the city's website for everybody to see, with regards to the annual action plan, the draft plan, as well as the public hearing notice. And the last copy of the annual action plan for 2014 that I saw was $50,000 is going to go to somebody to do the city's five-year plan. Well, that's fraud, waste, and abuse, because quite frankly, a qualified director should be able to do that. And previously, every five-year plan, I was involved, and Hazel Samuel actually made sure that that was done. So, again, Mr. Kelly, when will the public be able to see the 2014 Annual Action Plan on the website, and when is there going to be a public hearing?
Mr. Kelly, the plans made available might be Friday, in the Community Development Department. Excuse me, could you please say a couple between nine and five? We will not be holding another public hearing, because none does not require us to do so. Thank you.
Okay, so now the question becomes, when can the... No, it's absolutely not. My last memo from HUD, they said that there was to be another public hearing, so if HUD is saying we don't, the city of Asbury Park doesn't need that, can you produce that in the letter? Also, also, to be clear, just to be clear, the state of New Jersey just got cited by HUD for the inappropriate use of Community Development Black Grant Disaster Recovery Fund. So, again, we'd like proof of that. If I need to go and file over requests, I will do that. I will certainly contact HUD, but at the end of the day, HUD told us they're supposed to be here, and we want to know when that is, and a copy of that plan.
Good afternoon, Dan Harris, Senator.
I'll excuse me just one second.
Yeah, I, we've provided Ms. Ross a number of emails. One of the latest emails was an email from HUD representative acknowledging that we are not required to hold additional public hearings. Ms. Ross has been forwarded that email. So, we are endeavoring to post all our public notices on our website. As everyone knows, we're in the process of updating the city's website, and hope to be awarding a contract as soon as the state authorizes us to, which may be as soon as the next meeting, where we will have a much more robust website. But there is quite a information currently on the website, and if our CDVG-approved projects are not posted on that website, surely we can do that, and if anyone would like to know what the city has to approve, as Ms. Dickerson said, if anyone could stop by the office, we would provide them that information.
I'll be thanking next.
Good evening, Dan Harris, Senator Dan Vasquez. First time I've been here in a while, and thank you for putting this thing in the back. I really appreciate it. First thing, I have talked with Salerno, Captain Salerno, and Chief Mark Kim, on the fact that there are very few crosswalk signs in the southwest quadrant of Asbury. And Mr. Salerno talked this recently, this today, in reference to them not being by the school, and he explained that, you know, if we close the streets off, and if we, you know, block off the streets and have the crossing guards there, we're fine. But there are many intersections in the southwest quadrant where the yellow signs in the middle of the street are needed, because there are crosswalks there. I basically have counted one. Down here on the other side of town, there are over 100. You know, I would like to know what's the difference between one side of town and the city and the other, in reference to the safety of our citizens. Okay, that's the first question. Two, this year, the reentry, this Banda Boc legislation is going to be up in this next election, which has been passed in 43 states, where no longer can you put on an application if someone's been basically arrested and served time in jail, because it discriminates against them in getting a job. Once they have been picked, then you can question them on that. So, what we're saying is, the person who may go into jail, most of the time is not the person who comes out of jail. And based on the recidivism of people going back to jail, is the inability to find meaningful employment, so therefore people tend to go back and do what they know best. The city does have an opportunity to do this without even waiting for the state to do it. We could actually institute this, where we don't put this on our applications, and give people who need a job a chance to get a job without discriminating against them prior to even sitting down and having an interview with them. So, I would ask the city council to look into this. I'm sorry, 43 states have already approved this, so 43 states cannot be wrong. Am I talking? Okay. 43 states have already approved this. New Jersey happens to be one of the seven states in this country who have it. Actually, Duane Small and I attended a conference at St. Peter's University in reference to the reentry program, and we'd be more than happy to sit down and share it, you know, with city manager and the city council, because unemployment is our biggest, our biggest fear. It's our biggest crime in the city, not crime itself, but the fact that people cannot get jobs. Also, there are jobs coming up by the city. From what I understand, machine operator and a driver. And what I would ask you to do, Mr. Kelly, is to, before we give it to somebody else from out of this area, let somebody inside this city have an opportunity to work for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council.
One second, let me answer that briefly. There are crosswalk signs. Last week, I did talk to the city engineer, and they're available. The only thing we need is the locations where you think that they should go.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry Sclano, Long Branch. There are two things I wanted to bring up. On a positive note, I was thinking that we should have volunteers that are greeters or like tourist guides for the city, like they do in New York, maybe at the train station, maybe on Cookman Avenue, to tell people where places are, where the beach is, like a little personal handshake when tourists come here, so when they leave, they say, "Boy, Asbury Park is a nice, warm and fuzzy place. It's nice." Because a lot of people don't like paying for parking, but they'll get over that, but if they meet nice people that are local residents, I think that's a nice way to make the introduction. Now, the other thing is, I liked your quote, Meyer, in the paper that they had, I think it was Monday, that we're not only giving things away in the city, but I questioned that, not you, but the council or the city manager, or maybe the paper got it backwards, because they have been known to do that. It says you're going to do the lease with the parking lots, and you're going to take 15% of the net. Well, I see a problem with that. It really should be at the gross, because you can cook books. Who's going to audit their books when they say we spent money on that? But when they have a big event, and they charge $25 instead of the $15 a day? I've been, lived in New York, cooking books are a lot easier than you think. I think the term should be gross income, not net, because there's a big difference between 15% times zero and 15% times a million dollars, and I'd like you to really change that word, because I don't know if it was a misprint or not, but I was shocked to see it, because I didn't realize that, I never saw anybody get 15% of net. It's always the gross. Thank you very much.
No, because I have to say, excuse me, before you start, you know, you have to be right, because I don't know how that worked out, it's changed, but, you know, net, they can bet it out enough. So, it really has to be gross. Oh, and, you know, since you were so good, you're happy for it.
Ah, man. Good evening, Council, and ladies and gentlemen. Duane Small, President of the National Action Network. I'm here tonight to speak about a issue that was brought to my attention concerning employment in the city. Everybody knows me, and they know that's what I'm about. And the reason why I'm about that is because that's what brought me from the bottom to where I'm at now. A lot of people in here know my story, and I'm all for people rehabilitating themselves. I'm all for that. But when you reward a sex offender who took the innocence of a four-year-old girl, and he is rewarded with $75,000 a year in benefits, but he stole this young girl's innocence, and he's rewarded? How is that possible? Who would jeopardize their career for that? What about that girl's family? What if her family came here tomorrow and stood in front of our city and protested that y'all hired someone who took the innocence of my daughter? He should be terminated immediately, and let him come back and have his hearing and defend himself. Our city must stand up and stop letting people who don't live here use lawsuits to intimidate us. I ain't going for it, and I plan on sitting up there next year, too. I'm not going for it. I'm going to let y'all know right now, I'm not going for it. We have young men in this city that's college graduates that work for the DEP during the summertime, but you need to tell me they're not qualified to get a salary and grow here and become a property owner? Ain't that what we all want? I know I want that. I had somebody come to me tonight, say, "Y'all got some information for you about mortgage." My eyes lit up. Jerry, what you said, 15% of the gross? Yeah, okay. That's what I'm talking about. But what are we going to do about this? We also have an individual working here that was mailed the application to Florida and used the senior tower's address, which is illegal. You can't live with a senior in that building. So, how was he hired? Where was these jobs posted at? Who's responsible for hiring this individual? That's a problem, but we got to be about solution. So, what's the solution to this problem, Council? What are we going to do? Are we going to allow this guy to remain on the job, or are we going to terminate him immediately? Thank you.
Answer. Yes?
Can I get an answer?
No answer. I will just briefly answer that, Mr. Small. That is misinformation that is out in the public. I don't believe, and I haven't researched fully, but a four-year-old was not involved.
Mr. Kelly, excuse me, Mr. Kelly, I got the email, got his face off the internet and everything. A four-year-old girl was raped. I got it.
I mean, I...
I got it. You want to see it? I can bring it to you right now. I have it. As a matter of fact, no, I'm ready to answer.
I think we should move on to the next.
Because if she was four, but...
Excuse me, Mr. Small. Mr. Small, who do you have the next person coming to the mic?
Oh, hey, go ahead, I understand that now.
Good evening, Council. I'm Elder Derek Grant, Local Minister in the City, as well as the Vice President of the National...
Excuse me. You'll have an opportunity to do to the mic, can we have silence, Robert person, into the mic, if you please? Thank you.
Again, I am Elder Derek Grant, a local minister in the city and Vice President of the National Action Network Asbury Park Chapter. As we all know, there's been a myriad of issues plaguing our city, but none more pressing than the deplorable condition of the city's west side, ranging from gang violence, poverty, lack of employment, and most recently, claims of harassment, intimidation, and bullying of employees within the Public Works Department. I am here today as an advocate, as a servant to humanity, putting on notice that the National Action Network, the Asbury Park Chapter, as well as the citizens of this city, will no longer tolerate these actions going unpunished. In the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Therefore, we of the National Action Network will be conducting our own investigation, surrounding these claims of bullying, harassment, and intimidation of employees within the Public Works Department. We are prepared to investigate these issues, and if necessary, hold accountable those persons that were involved in this blatant discrimination on a state level as well as a federal level. We also admonish this city council, as well as the city manager, to initiate its own investigation.
Mr. Small, can we please...
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm so sorry. Please forgive me. I won't do it again.
And again, the initial report of this bullying, harassment, and intimidation was given to the city manager and folks within the city, within the city government. So, we admonish this city council, as well as the city manager, to do its own investigation and hold whoever is responsible for this intimidation and harassment accountable. Thank you.
Thank you.
There has been no action that has come before me, and all the Public Works Union employees, and all the Public Works employees are in a union, nor have I gotten any agreements from any union official. So, sets a record straight. I do not have anything that Mr. Grant has referenced. No employee has complained to me. And again, I don't have any agreements with any union official of any union, anyone of the four unions in the city.
And no one in the public?
Correct.
Denise Richardson, Bridge Avenue, Asbury Park. I also got wind of some of what's going on as far as personnel. To the prior council, well, I've come to the prior council many times before, questioning why we do not hire within the city of Asbury. Also, I remember a couple of years ago, Mr. Reed stating that he was going to train the employees at the DEP. a couple of years ago, Mr. Reed stating that he was going to train the employees at DPW, so they would be able to move up into positions instead of hiring from the outside, for someone to take over, well, for someone to come in and oversee the gentlemen that have been there, been in their job for a number of years. So, and to hear that someone is being hired from the outside, from the outside of the city, to come in and take over a position where you have people that have been here for many years, I find that really appalling. I thought we would hire from within, and those people that are qualified, if they have the qualifications, would move up. And I do remember, and we can go back to the minutes, that those employees at DPW would be sent out for training, so they would be able to qualify for these positions that would be coming up.
Good evening. She lives on 1200 Jefferson Street, Asbury Park. Ex-Asbury Park Board Education Board member, which we had to go through a criminal background check, this is going to board education across his kids, which I think everybody should have to go through, a criminal background check, or whatever. And, but, I'm here because I heard about the, the employee that we hired, employees coming from out of town to be hired. We have plenty of unemployed people in Asbury Park that need jobs that maybe we could hire. But I'm here to talk about also the, I live on Jefferson Street, down Fourth Avenue, and if you ride down Fourth Avenue, you will hit a bump every last mile, minute, wherever you go. So, I hear like maybe six months ago, asking about when you're on Fifty Streets, y'all say, "One time for the money," now is the money there now? I know, when's the physical year? I know, the Board of Education ends June 30th, starts July, and June 2nd. I don't know when the council, the city council starts, but it was like the board, I know it's coming up, July is like right around the corner. So hopefully we can get our streets done, because it's, I don't even drive down Fourth Avenue. I drive down Third to come across, because that's how bad it is. Not just Asbury, not Jefferson, not just for, by the high school, on Sunset, it's ridiculous. Asbury Avenue is ridiculous. I mean, just like the, the main streets into the town. Come on, let's get to the program. We need to do something. It's ridiculous. Have a nice night. God bless.
Thank you. You know, I want to make a suggestion, that the engineer, I've gotten a host of different complaints about Fourth Avenue from a multitude of different people. But the Quality of Life Committee will be meeting next week. That's one of the things we'll look at. But in addition to that, Mr. Kelly, could you ask the city engineer if he could give us some type of ideas to put the suggested schedule of repairing roads in?
Sure. The city was recently awarded two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in resurfacing grants, and I will have Mr. Kuna prepare a list of streets to be repaired.
What's the timeframe?
Yeah, it's something that he could have done prior to...
Hi. Good evening. Ruth Ann Harrison, 406th Avenue, Asbury Park. I've been a resident here since the eighties, and I have to say, I absolutely love a lot of the stuff that has happened in Asbury Park. But the one thing that kind of annoys me about the redevelopment is the way that the planning board and the zoning board tend to like stop all of these different development projects, because they don't like a particular style, or they don't like a particular color, or whatever. And I would like to say that I would really like to see the Hobnian project go through, because I think to get a name like that to market our, our town, it's huge. And I think if we deny them, it's going to put like a real negative mark on Asbury Park. So I just wanted to share those thoughts with you. And one of the things that really, really bothers me is the pavilion down by Sixth Avenue on the boardwalk. I realize that, you know, that all of this is a business, and they may not have the money to redevelop it as of right now, but a simple coat of paint over that pavilion would make that whole end of the boardwalk look a little better. So that's about all I have to say. I hope people approve the Hobnian project, and have a good night, everybody. Thank you for all of your hard work.
Conrad Neblit, 1218 Sunset Avenue. And I just want to also mention about the potholes. And I'm really concerned about the, not just the potholes. I live on Sunset Avenue, and it's horrendous. It shakes my house. You know, I'm, I'm right after you come up with the Wanamasa Bridge, and it literally shakes my house. And I've been here three and a half years, and it's been every year, it's the same thing. So I'm glad that there's a grant for pavement rather than potholes. But I came up today also, is today I saw someone from the city patching a hole. And there was a series of holes. I, I was so shocked that I saw this. They patched one hole. So I had, I really had to come up and say it, because it's like, well, what is that? And, and the other holes were right next to them, like, you know. So, you know, it really is a serious problem, and as a citizen, it saves taxes. That is not okay for me. To me, I'd rather do not patch any holes as opposed to one hole. So I'm not, you know, I'm not saying it's to be, you know, funny, because it's really not funny, and it is funny. But it, it's like, you know, more, it's got to get handled. So I, I would appreciate if that, all of them at least get patched. But really what I want is to pave the street. That's how I feel.
Can I apologize about this, Steve? Where was the, what street is?
Sunset Avenue, and it was right in front of 1218 Sunset Avenue. You will see the one hole patched. And you see that the other ones are not. Thank you.
Need a Congress, 1501 Ocean Avenue. We missed several meetings in the winter, which went on forever. And now we're back, and it's nice to see everybody. It's nice to see everyone. The thing is, one thing hasn't changed at these meetings. Some statements people make, which they're quite upset about, just don't get answered. There's dead supplements. And it's always, it's always so, I'm a communications person. That's what I do for a living. I write, I edit, I book and design. And the idea that if someone says something that they're really upset about, and no one answers, it would do so much to diffuse the tension. And just, just any kind of acknowledgement, particularly there from you, because you are the authority. And if you say something, it is very manly. And so, just an answer, I think that's what most people here want, is just an answer, even if it's yes, we're looking into it, or no, we're not, or we really just don't know. And that's it.
Thank you.
Correspondent to the City Court Office, we have a petition to extend premises of stone homes on June 13th and June 14th.
Yes, I understand.
Okay. Another petition to extend the premises of stone homes for June 27th, June 28th, also approved by the Chief.
Move it.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kim?
Yes.
I have a application for a rapid license for the Student D. Colwin Corporation.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kim?
Yes.
I have a second application for a rapid license for the Student D. Colwin Foundation.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Mayor Kim?
Yes.
I have a third application for a rapid license for the Friends of the American Cancer Society.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kim?
Yes.
I have, under, it is not listed on the agenda, it's a citizen advisory for an application for a...
Could you maybe give a little bit of a...
Okay. I have another item not listed on the agenda. This was received in the month yesterday. It was an application for a catering permit for Johnny Mac House Spirits, DB Ventures, for a cameo coni-bathon approved by the chief of police. There are four separate dates. The item pressing on the date is one, is 6/29, and they need to get approval before the meeting.
So today, we would have one more meeting before the coni-bathon, right? So we don't have to approve it. We have to review the application and then approve it at the next meeting. And if we approve yes, they could still be able to get their coni-bathon.
They would have to physically drive the application, maybe two weeks prior to the event. They would, if it wasn't approved, that they followed the company, and they would have to drive it the next day to...
So what's going to do that? These individuals that are bringing in these special apps at the last tent, we, I'm not going to approve them. I don't know about the rest of the council. I've said it before, and I, I had, they know well in advance that they want to do it.
Well, if there's not a grade, then it's dead in order anyway.
Well, so we're going to, we're going to hold it, because then it will, it will die. So I suggest that you table it next, councilman.
Okay. On to item F, approval of this.
Oh, you better skip that.
Item G, bill resolutions and working contracts. We have a bill resolution for one million, seven hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Laredo?
Well, I can't vote on the community side portion without bill, so I don't know how to do that. I can, I can vote for the bill resolution as a whole, but I can't vote for the community side portion. We want to just table that bill.
That particular one is not going to be able to be approved tonight.
Right. So just make sure you put it on at the next council meeting.
But Councilwoman Quinn has voted yes for the remainder of the bill.
No, you can't do that.
You can break it up like that.
Yes.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Mayor Kim?
Yes.
We are on to working compensation, two thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and seven...
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kim?
Yes.
We're now on to item H, applications for special events outlawed during the work session, of Tom Gilmore.
Second.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kim?
Yes.
Item I, where's the... Item A, have a resolution establishing additional fees relating to special events within the city.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kim?
Yes.
Item B, a resolution to apply for the United States Department of Justice, Lots of Justice Program for FY 2014 bulletproof best partnership.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Kim?
Yes.
Next, a resolution for the award of a contract to suburban consulting engineers aimed for professional design, bidding, and construction administration services for the Springwood Park project, a condition on state approval.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
So here's my problem with this one, and similar to my problem with it before. So we're gonna, and I don't want to hold up the Springwood Avenue, but I think everybody in this room wants to see the Springwood Avenue go. But we're, we're, we have an opportunity where we're going to have the ability to encourage or incentivize this construction company and engineering to hire locally. So I worry if I vote yes, if, if there isn't an incentive or something in there that, that we are hiring local, with this contract on Springwood Avenue, then we're moving. So I will vote yes on it, but when that contract is drawn up, there has to be something in it. To incentivize. I'm not saying they have to do all local. I'm saying you need to either give them a tax break if they go locally, or if they train some kids, or if we can have a minimum number, but they have to hire locally, and if that doesn't happen, it shouldn't be a resolution.
But we, we've done this in the past, and, you know, not, everybody's agreed, so...
Yeah.
I mean, we have that...
But it hasn't been that incentive.
Well, we tried, and you're right, but the problem always was, we couldn't force them to do it.
And tonight, we're just authorizing an award of a contract with an engineering firm to draw plans. So the next step is going to be getting to, going up to Sid, and getting a contractor, and putting together contracts associated with, work associated with the partners, just to basically draw the, the design plans, sort of the very beginning of the project. And your concerns have been noted, and we will definitely address them.
Let me ask you, either Fred or Jack, what was formerly known as the set aside. And I think that's basically what Councilwoman Quinn is talking about. Do either of you know the stipulations, the rules for, for set aside? And I ask that because it's my understanding that when the infrastructure work was done on Springwood Avenue, Lucas Construction had met their set aside obligations, it just happened not to be with residents of Asbury Park. So I'm just wondering if either of you, and when I use the term set aside, that may not be the appropriate language right now. And if not, then we have to address it. Text me.
Well, as you've already mentioned, this school is the engineering firm that is doing design work, and they will be preparing the bid specifications. The language that will wrap around the bid specifications, we can provide. However, I think we are very limited to the instructions that we can give contractors, can obligate them to hire people from Asbury Park, nor do I believe can we hire them or, or require them to hire minorities. We could ask them to strive to, to hire minority firms, and, and we could participate in that by having training here at, at the city. But we will research that, and, and again, provide those specifications to the engineering firm that they would wrap around with technical specifications.
And does that have to come back to council again to authorize, you know, once the engineers have designed the project, then it has to come back to council to authorize you actually going out to bid, to look for a contractor to construct what the engineers have had done. So those provisions will be in the contract that will ultimately be drawn up between the city and whatever construction firm is going to do the actual work. And we will review what the city has done to pass with regard to that issue, as well as what the law allows, and we've heard what the council wants, and we'll make certain that there are provisions in there. And it's fair game when this matter comes back before you authorize it to go out to bid, that that is all been accomplished, before you authorize the project to go out to bid to your satisfaction.
But let me just say one thing, because I think one of the things the public wants to know, or needs to understand, is what the state stipulations or federal government stipulations are, the language that goes into any type of agreement. And so if we could get that, it would be much appreciated.
And it would be interesting to me what we can incentivize. So if we can't require, can we incentivize?
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
I'll go to the next one.
And we're on to item D, a resolution to appoint planning board members, will be preferred for the next meeting. Item B.
That's not my line, did you?
Sure did.
And that doesn't require a resolution from the council, those were mayor appointments that the mayor announced during earlier Friday tonight's meeting.
Item E, a resolution authorizing the settlement of the Manada Hatchet Sunset Mansion LLC versus the City of Asbury Park, and the City of Asbury Park's only Board of Adjustment.
Move it.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Item F, there's a resolution to amend water parking agreements between the city and water developer Asbury Partners LLC to retain Asbury.
That was the term.
Yes, will be preferred for the next meeting. Item G, a resolution of the State of New Jersey, Department of Water Protection, Green Acres, Enabling Resolution for the Acquisition of Trunk Properties.
Move it.
Second.
Question. I was reading the resolution, with a 4.5 million, our responsibility is going to be one point two five, don't you think?
It is, councilmember. Fortunately, the city is one of the few urban aid municipalities that is eligible for their share, which is 25%, but that would be lent to the city over 30 years at 0% interest.
So it's a minimal.
So it would be a very minimal amount if we were to be awarded this grant.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
And just so the public knows, we're applying for green acres funding for, like, this law, I think that's why they're going. Or current, I guess, or current.
We're on to item H, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, amending temporary appropriations for 2014.
Move it.
Second.
We can't move forward with that tonight, because that requires a two-thirds vote of councilmen, given that you don't have four members here.
Do we need to do it tonight, if I can get more of them? Or if we don't need to do it tonight, then I prefer not, but if you need to do it tonight, I'll call.
No. We can.
Item J, public hearing, none. Item K, we are under ordinance, this is the first reading, and ordinance of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, approving the form and authorizing the execution of amended ground lease and agreement with Monmouth County Improvement Authorities relating to the issuance of Asbury Park lease war treatment to fill the lease revenue refunding bonds and funding bonds, Series 2014 by the Monmouth County Improvement Authority and other matters in connection there.
And what the city council is, on occasion, interest rates drop to a point where the city could go out and refinance its outstanding bonds, and that is what the city is planning to do, at a net savings of approximately $200,000.
All right, move it.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Will be a public hearing held on this Thursday evening. There we go. On to.
I think we're done.
Item B, yes. The ordinance and staff chambers circuit parking space are used by handicapped persons at property located at 113 Monroe Avenue, designated as block 1302, block 3, the City of Asbury Park, and amending and supplementing section 7-36 in terms of handicapped parking of traffic and revised general ordinances of the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
We're into a public hearing, ordinance authorizing the City of Asbury Park to lay easement over certain portions of the right-of-way area airspace adjacent to the property location at 660, 662 Goodman Avenue, block 2404, lot 1. Motion to go to a call of seven?
Yes, I'll move it.
Second.
Ball of paper? Go to the public. Basically, this is the same type of ordinance that the city has approved in the past, when applicants have come with development projects to the planning board, and have gotten approvals by the planning board, but those approvals have been conditioned on a number of things, one of which is to come before the mayor and council to get approval of an approachment into the airspace of the city's right-of-way. This relates to the proposed new construction of the Taka Restaurant, which occupies the old Harry's Roadhouse space on Goodman Avenue, and you know, it's an access space. And that went before the planning board for approvals, it has been fully approved by the board, subject to and contingent upon this particular aspect of it coming back from the council, there are certain canopies that protrude into the city's right-of-way. And as I've indicated in the CBD, the city has approved these types of easements in the past, and Donna Semen was here and made a presentation to you previously, and recommended it, because he felt it was in further, it was a good planning, and it's a weapon that can be proposed and approved by the planning board, was very attractive to design. So it's up to the mayor and council, obviously, and if any members of the public have any questions or concerns, now would be the time to raise that.
Move to close.
Second. Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Second.
Councilmember Laredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. It's a very happy place tomorrow.